Going to order the work session of the Wilsonville City Council, April 5th, 2021, at 5:59 PM. Are there any questions on the Order of Agenda or the Items on Consent Agenda? Hearing none. Are there any councilor concerns? Looks like we can move along. So, the first item up on the work session is a presentation on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee bylaws. Mr. Cosgrove and Ms. Monahan.
I will have Ms. Monahan pull up the PowerPoint presentation. All right. She's able to share her screen? There we go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Zoe Monahan. I am the Assistant to the City Manager here at the city. And give me just one second. My mouse is deciding not to work at the moment. But there we go. There we go. Can you see that screen all right?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, this evening, we are here to provide an update on our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee bylaws. At our last few meetings, the council had directed us to move forward with a Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, and then approved the concept we had presented about recruiting members that started in late February and it closed this evening. And then finally, on March 1st, the council provided direction regarding the bylaws, and you had a few questions that you wanted us to answer. These are the three areas that council had asked for additional guidance, and you had asked us to go back to our community members we've been working with, as well as staff, and talk a little bit more about these areas to provide you with a little bit more information. So, in your packet there were updated bylaws that address these three areas. And then at the end, there's also two additional cleanup items that we'd like to bring to your attention this evening and seek your input on. So, we'll go through each section individually, and I'd like to get your feedback so that we can capture that and make sure that we're moving in the correct direction. This is in Section 4, which is Membership. And this was an area that the council wanted to make sure that we were being broad and inclusive. Originally, this had read, starting from the second sentence, "The council will strive to appoint members to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee who bring their lived experiences as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, queer and questioning, intersex, asexual, other sexualities, sexes, and gender non-gendered, LGBTQIA+ people." And then it continues the way that it's written on the screen. I'll also remind you that we do have this last sentence that says, "Appointed members will be expected to think broadly in terms of how issues of racism, sexism, ableism, and other discriminatory and prejudicial bias impact all residents in Wilsonville." So, we have included the "such as," which we discussed at the last meeting. We also broke down all of the different ways of outlining the BIPOC community, and we've just simplified it to communities of color to make sure that we've not left anyone out. We've also simplified the LGBTQIA+ to LGBTQ communities. Our consultant went back to individuals in this community and asked, "How should we reference this group?" And make sure that it's inclusive and we're using the appropriate language. And this is what they brought back to us. So, that's how we got here with this language. I would like your feedback as to if we're on the right track, if you'd like to see additional changes so that we can capture this section appropriately. Once we finish this section, we'll move on to the next section and gather your input.
I don't hear any comments. Do you have any questions?
So, did, I guess, it sounds like the committee did not like the BIPOC reference. Is that correct?
Yeah. My understanding is that's a newer term, and that some communities prefer communities of color. And since that newer phrase identifies certain groups but not others, it was felt that communities of color didn't leave anyone out.
Okay. Okay.
Remember, we're in the informal portion, so you can just chime in if one person's done.
Are we doing hand raising or conversation? Do I need to raise my hand, or should I?
No. Remember, it's informal, so when one person's done talking, the next can start.
Okay. I think that this was one of my, you guys addressed kind of my question, and the last time this was brought up, so I appreciate that. And I think you guys did a good job doing that. And you guys, you can see the expansion of it, I think is a little more robust. And I think it kind of, if you, the way I read this, literally in one paragraph, which is not easy to do, you guys incorporated potentially everybody who lives in Wilsonville. And that was kind of my, my question is, how do we make this feel like that I can kind of encompass anybody? So, I feel like that far was met. So, thank you for your guys' hard work on that and taking that really seriously and doing some analytical work on that, and I can see that you did that. So, thanks.
And this, thinking back to the conversation before, this is not excluding anyone who doesn't identify with one of those particular terms. Maybe they have a child who is queer or questioning, for example, but they themselves may not be. They might, they could still qualify because this says they bring their lived experiences, such as. Does that sound right?
Yes. The intent is that they could explain to us what those experiences may be, and as long as they're thinking in broad terms about the community. And the intent is not that we have folks saying, "I'm the individual that represents this group," but we're thinking broadly about individuals in the community and the different perspectives that individuals might have. So, the intent is to make sure that it's broad and can be inclusive of anyone in the community, the community, excuse me, that is interested in participating and feels they have a voice to share, to make sure that we are including all of those in our community. So, and I believe with the plus, the plus could be allies as well. So, we don't have that listed, but that could be the ally as well.
The actual acronym for LGBTQ is actually like 17 letters. So, the plus, that's what that does. You're right.
So, I have, I have one, two questions. One is, what is the purpose of the semicolon that is after communities of color, which differentiates that from the rest of the part of that description? And then the second thing is, this definition excludes me. So, I would not fit into any one of those categories. So, if we're trying to be inclusive, then I think we have, we have swung the pendulum the other way in terms of saying that diversity, equity, and inclusion only includes these groups.
I think, I think, good point on the semicolon. I think that should be a comma. And then in terms of your second part, I think the whole purpose of doing the DEI is that these are for marginalized, historically marginalized communities, which if you identify as a straight white person, you would not necessarily fit that category because you have not been historically marginalized. That's what I believe the point is.
I think it's a point, though, that it, no matter how, like, I agree with Council Linville, that if you have some type of passion for this, or if your child is this, like, let's pretend for a second I'm not gay. My son is African-American, and maybe I want to speak to this as a father, that, you know, regardless of immutable traits, we shouldn't exclude anybody from wanting to have a voice on this issue. I thought that, like, Mayor Fitzgerald said, where it says, you know, if this is your lived experience, you know, maybe that encapsures it. That's what I was, that's kind of how I read it, too. But I do also think that we need to make sure that everybody, regardless of their immutable trait, feels like that they can have a voice on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues.
Couple thoughts. I think you're right that the lived experience does handle it. And if it doesn't, I think the last sentence about appointed members expecting to think broadly would also cover it. And I will stipulate, for the record, that there's no way we could ever word this in a way that would satisfy everyone. So, wordsmithing this has been a challenge, and I think that there's probably going to be an opportunity for the actual DEI committee. Once we adopt this charter, if they wish to have this conversation, I would recommend that you allow them to do that and then possibly bring back any changes that they might see fit, recommendations to you at a later date. I think what we have here works on a variety of levels. That's my recommendation to you.
My only, my only concern is that, again, it's not, it's not something I'm going to die on the mountain about. But if we further put up walls and don't do, and segregate historically marginalized populations from those that are not, we're missing the opportunity, I think, to continue to have the dialogue and the, and the interface between all groups. And, and I agree that this could be done at a later date, but I just, I just think it's so important for people who are in the majority culture to be engaged with and participate in, understanding the issues of those populations that are struggling and trying to deal with issues within our city. So, when it talks about all residents in Wilsonville, I think we're just missing that opportunity, either for a listening opportunity or for an engagement. So, again, it's not something I'm going to die on the, on the mountain about, but I, but I think it's unfortunate. It's too bad.
I suppose, though, I mean, this is all still evolving and being created as it's, you know, as it's coming out. In, in the bylaws, also in discussion of what the actual work and under that Section 2 purpose, I see lots of opportunity for engagement in there, for, for the broad community in, in that purpose. And while the DEI, you know, committee may be leading some of that work in identifying items toward the DEI plan, or, you know, providing advice on here, but there's, there's, you know, advising City on Cultural Response of Service Delivery, programming, communication strategies. I see that as potential programming that all in the community could engage in, and conversations that all in the community could enter into. So, I do think that the bylaws overall kind of, kind of provide a roadmap with the understanding that that's, that's where we're headed, and that's where the broad community wants to go to.
Can I, in, trying to move this forward, I know that there's not going to be agreement on every period and colon here. Can I recommend that we get through this, and if you have ideas that you'd like to forward to the mayor on how we could make this language better, I totally support you forwarding that to the mayor who can, or you can forward it to staff. We can compile those comments. This is not official until you adopt it. So, there's another opportunity to have this conversation. I've heard the concern here, Councilor Linville. I don't know that we'll ever get it perfect, quite frankly. But I do believe that the whole purpose of the committee is that we're looking to have people provide input and recommendations to council who don't normally partake of the process or have historically been marginalized. So, folks like me, I think, I don't view this as me not being invited into the process. I believe that there will be plenty of opportunities for this committee to get out into the community and have dialogue with the entire community. So, but if you have language you'd like us to consider, I would, I would love to hear that, and I would look forward to having a conversation with you about how we could do that and bring that back to council.
So, why don't, we've heard a number of comments, and so this doesn't get lost, why don't we try to do that, those individual, you know, forward me those, and we can have one-on-one conversations, and, and then bring this back to the next meeting so that it's, it's fresh? We try to do this at the next meeting, possibly.
Can I just ask, was ageism intentionally left out, or because it isn't considered one of these things? Or, or is the assumption that when you're old, you, you get more?
No. That's, no.
More difference or less difference? But...
It wasn't left out intentionally, and it's a good catch. It's certainly something that we can consider and put in the language as well. So, I think, I will take your comment. I will take Councilor Linville's comment, and we'll see what we can do to add language. And any others that you might have tonight.
As, as an officially old person now, I can say there are some things that are, that give you an advantage of being an old person, and there are other things, not so much. So...
Wednesday at Goodwill, you get a discount. I can tell you that because I qualify.
Yeah. It swings both ways.
And, and I'd like to go back to Brian's comment, where the, we aren't trying to exclude anybody. The whole intent of this is to be inclusive and work towards making sure that we're welcoming to all citizens or those, not that we aren't welcoming, but to ensure that all feel that way, if they may not have always. And the groups that were specifically identified were those that have historically been marginalized, and that's why we called them out specifically in the bylaws. But we, I have notes of adding something relating to age, and then any additional comments that come to the mayor, trying to work those in before the next meeting.
And I, I might spend a little time with our consultant tomorrow and talk about all these issues that came up tonight. We, we meet with them. So, I think everything I've heard so far sounds reasonable to me. So, we can take what we're hearing, make notes, and then we can come back to you with some proposed recommendations at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor, if it's all right, may I continue with the next section?
Please.
Thank you. Please do.
This one should be easier.
This is a fun, exciting one. So, youth was an area that, that council, we, we had identified that we would appoint one Wilsonville high school student. And this was an area that council asked us to go back and seek additional input. So, as we talked to community members internal to staff, and then also got additional information from members connected to the high school, we learned that two students was probably the best way to go. This allows them to not be on their own island with a bunch of adults and makes them feel more comfortable. And it also allows us to provide a mentoring and potentially staggering junior and senior as member, so one being, they've served one year and they're on their second year, and one being on their first year, to kind of show themselves the ropes and provide some mentorship. So, the way it, excuse me, written now, it says up to two. So, this is intended to provide flexibility to the council. So, if there was a year where you had zero students apply, it wouldn't preclude the council from filling the whole committee. It also allows you one or two, depending on the applicants that you've received. We also added area. The council was concerned this wasn't broad enough to make it clear that any high school student in, living in Wilsonville, no matter what education they're pursuing, would be eligible. And then we also have added that they would serve up to two one-year terms. So, they would be appointed for one-year terms, understanding that students have really crazy schedules, and they may not be able to commit the two years right off the bat. So, allowing them that flexibility and less barriers to joining this committee, but then allowing them to reapply and continuing to serve for that extra year if it's something they enjoyed and they could continue to provide that experience. So, that is the updated draft that we have for you this evening, for your consideration.
Good. I like it.
I, I think this is fantastic and is really well done. And I guess, I have a question for Councilor Linville, since you have so much experience in the higher education realms. Does this type of opportunity really help somebody when they're trying to fill out college applications at that next level and show that community involvement? Do you, as somebody that worked in that field, see this as also being valuable for higher education?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think this is a great, this is a great community, you know, colleges are looking for that community service, and this is certainly an opportunity for them to do it and to document as well as to get references from both the members of the committee and from the city. So, I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity.
All right. I wanted to jump in, too, and, and say that, you know, I appreciate you kind of digging and finding some more information on this and considering, you know, increasing the number of students that could be involved. I would even, you know, having, kind of thinking about this, too, I would even suggest that we could have up to three high school students with the idea then, say, say one of the high school students isn't able to make a meeting, and we only have two. Now, we're down to one. And then, you know, that, that one student is going to have more of an isolated experience, perhaps, participating in that meeting. We wouldn't have to fill all three high school students. Perhaps it could be up to what we're seeing as applications for the rest of the board and how it balances with the overall size of the board, too. I don't know what the rest of council thinks on that, but I really do think that student voice is going to be an important piece in this committee, and just want to do all that we can to encourage people to apply and to feel like they are wanted and welcomed to this group. Sometimes, too, if you feel like, oh, maybe I shouldn't apply because I probably wouldn't get it anyway, or some, you know, something like that, it could be great to, to have more opportunity available for, for students that might be considering this. So, I'd be curious what the rest of council thinks on that one.
Well, I have a recent experience, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, with developing one of, a similar opportunity. And I think two is definite, I mean, it, I suppose having up to three would be a fine idea if, because it was hard to get people to be a little brave enough to do it, and they have a lot of other things going on. So, I don't know if this is hard to rise to the top with all the things people do. Then I'm thinking, if we have three youth and we only have eight other people, are we losing some other input? So, maybe this is one that we consider and see how it goes, see how the recruitment goes.
So, I have just one question that has to do with these, I think the, I think the up to two is great. I think the, the terms is, is a wonderful thing. The question I had was, do these high school students have to meet the other requirements of lived experiences that the other members do? And so, if that's the case, I think it would be good to spell that out in this section. I don't know what the intent was, whether it was just any youth, any high school student, but I think that piece would be helpful to clarify.
All, all committee members are the same in terms of application requirements. So, I would say that, yes, they have to meet the same requirements as every other member of the committee because they are voting members.
We could also make this youth member terms, if that would be helpful to clarify.
I think it's clear the way it is.
True.
I really like it the way it is. I think it's clear and concise and makes sense.
I, I think we can move on to the next one, given the fact that we're going to cogitate on all of the input we receive.
So, the next section was council liaison. And after we talked to staff and got a little bit of input from community members, some didn't know much about the city and didn't feel comfortable providing that input, but the input we did receive was that it wasn't the right place for a council liaison. And from a staff perspective, the reasoning for this is that the only other two committees that the council has a council liaison on are the Tourism Promotion Committee, as well as the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee. And those both have grants or have something to do with finances. So, and then you also sit on the Budget Committee, which is another committee with finances. So, it's not recommended at this time that we include a city council liaison on the committee. However, it is open to the public, so any council member would be welcome to sit in on the meeting. And there would also be an opportunity for the committee to report back to the council, as well as a staff update, especially as we're forming the strategy that will come back to you, just like any other committee.
Any comments on that?
This was originally my question, and I'm just, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with its recommendation.
Yeah. I think that's an excellent recommendation.
Okay. I think we can move on.
Okay. Great. So, the next section, this is in the, the Terms of the Voting Membership. So, this is a cleanup. So, as Legal looked at this a little closer, as we were about to bring it back to you, we realized that we needed a little bit more clarity. So, at the end of this last sentence, it says, "Terms of appointment for less than three years shall not count towards the maximum time of service." But it left some room for interpretation. So, we've added, "Including partial term appointments if you're filling a vacancy, as well as if you're appointed with the initial positions 1 to 7." And those are the one-year and two-year appointments for the initial term. So, this means that if you are appointed for a partial term, or at the beginning, and you don't serve your full three-year term, that you could continue. So, you could serve your two three-year terms, plus whatever this smaller amount or not-full service is, before you need to take your hiatus, before you can reapply to the committee. So, that's just clarification that we've proposed.
So, it, so is this consistent with all of the other partial term appointments for our other boards and commissions?
I would have to look back on the, the different boards, but since we had said, "Term appointments for less than three years shall not count towards the maximum time of service," this was just to make it clear. I would need to go back. I can find out before the next meeting how many others specifically identify partial terms or not.
I think, I think it is typical for newly appointed committees to have language like this. But we, we will go back and look at the last three or four that we've, last three or four committees that we brought to council and see what the bylaws say.
I know for the DRB that there has often been, in the recent, in the recent past that I'm aware of, there have been partial year appointments. So, I, and I, I'm not certain, I can't recall specifically whether those have counted toward the full terms, the requirement. So, that was just my, my question. I think we ought to know whether that, that's being consistent with all of our other appointments.
Definitely. We will do that, but I think the recommendation would still stand regardless for this committee. We'll bring that information back at the next council meeting. We'll bring that information back at the next council meeting.
Yes, we will bring that back. So, the one other cleanup item is the, the hiatus element that we have included. So, if you term out from this committee and you're still interested in serving, after a few years of not serving, you can reapply. So, we had originally said after four years. However, that was written when we originally brought the bylaws to you with a four-year term. So, this is just a cleanup to say, if you served a three-year term, you would have a three, or excuse me, the six-year term, you would stay in that multiples of three and do a three-year term hiatus. Okay. So, finally, our next steps are to adopt the bylaws. This is tentatively scheduled on May 17th. We can certainly push that back if we need additional time to make sure that these are bylaws that you're comfortable with.
Hey, Zo.
We are also, yes.
Zo, can we take a little pause here? I think you and I had a conversation earlier about maybe increasing the number of committee members from 11 to 13, right?
We could do that if that's something that the, the council would like to do.
Yeah. So, that's, that's a point of discussion now, just because we have, as you see on your screen, 44 applications. And if you use two of those for students, that's going to bring it down to a smaller number, obviously. I think you're going to have a hard time kind of winnowing down from the 44 because I didn't see one application where I wasn't just absolutely wowed. So, you got your work cut out for you on this one, mayor and council members, getting this down to. So, I'm, what I'm suggesting is if, if you had a couple more slots for adult members of the community, it might make your job a little bit easier. I think you would want to pause and think about that and maybe have a discussion on that now.
Have we, any students actually applied yet?
Yes, we have two students.
There's two actual students?
Exactly two.
Yes. The numbers on your screen are the applications received. So, the application period has now closed. We do have, I believe, a one or two college students as well that wouldn't fall in the high school student category, they fall in the adult category. But yes, we have two high school students that did apply and 44 total applications. So, 42 adult members of the community that applied.
So, have we seen a really wide range of diversity that we are hoping for?
Yes.
The, the applications are excellent.
Yeah, we, we're going to have a hard time. So, if, if you want to entertain that as an option under Section 4 membership, you would just simply change nine to 11 to 11 to 13 if that's something you want to do.
What a wonderful problem to have.
You were saying that earlier.
I'm delighted. I'm absolutely delighted. I, I certainly think that, you know, given that people are sometimes able to make meetings and sometimes not, I think adding two slots is really, might be helpful.
The only issue would be quorum, you would have, you would go obviously from needing six votes to seven, but that's not a huge issue.
Well, I'm seeing nodding in the room.
Okay.
And, and it, it does bring up for me the, the issue of college students are in that mix also, is it would be nice to have, and partly the, my other comment about age, ageism, it would be nice to, to be looking at in these appointments, a broad range of ages. So, that, that we have some young adults, young parents, middle-aged people, old people, you know, in that mix, we try to get a variety of ages in there too because they, your age alone brings a different set of experiences.
I think that will be your task as a council, is to make sure when you're making those appointments, that you cross as many of those Ts as you, as you can.
With that, I do have, would this be a good point to talk about the appointment process a little bit more?
Yeah, I think we're done, aren't we, Zo? In terms of our presentation? Yes, so it's all yours, Mayor.
Thank you. So, I wanted to talk about the appointment process. And as all of my fellow counselors are aware, the council rules state that any member of council may interview and/or recommend names to the mayor for appointment to any board, committee, or commission. So, all of us will get all of these applications. And the, you know, the, so from this list, somebody might say, wow, you know, so-and-so applied, I, I recommend that person. This has always been part of our process and you could just, that, that's part of it. Because of the council protocols, we also have to remember that no more than two elected officials from our council can meet to interview these applicants at one time. Or we end up having a quorum and then we have to have a much more formal, public meeting, which I think is not really conducive to those interviews that we've, we've had, you know, those, the type of conversational interview. It would also take a lot more time and resources. So, past practices have left the interviewing and recommending of names to the mayor with an invitation to other counselors to join the interviews. I know when I was on council from 2013 through 16, there was an invitation to participate in the interviews. I, I interviewed, I, others may have attended interviews, I just know that I was one of the two people, one of the counselors with the mayor on a number of interviews at that time. And in, in the last four years, Council President Ockerval has, had been participating with the mayor in the interviews. It is a very large commitment of time. The series of long evenings, so that's what it takes, and it is, you know, certainly worth it. And in order to be efficient with the council, staff, and prospective DEI committee members' time, with everybody's time, later in the meeting, in a few minutes here, I will ask if any of the counselors would like to be involved in the interview process. And to just reinforce that this is because of our, we have to keep in mind that no two, that two elected officials at a time is, is all we can do, is the, is the maximum to avoid a quorum. So, if there's interest by more than one of you to participate in the interview process, we do have a solution. We can split up the applications into groups and assure that, you know, we just have one counselor and the mayor at, at each interview. And then, I, another part of the process that we discussed some time ago, we discussed that staff and two citizens, two citizen members of the ad hoc Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Group that the staff has been working with, they've been referred to as the Steering, Steering Group, I think. They have two members who have identified that they are not applying for this committee and they would participate with the staff in first looking through these 44 applications. And that was a request of the committee and would identify maybe half of those that they thought, of course, no one had any idea how many applications would come in. So, they would, they would identify a group of, of applications that they think would be good for this committee, even though we think all of them would be. So, they have their work cut out for them. But this will help council narrow the field. It doesn't limit me as mayor, I, I still would look at all of them. So, it's not like any would be removed from the group. And all, all of us would see all of the applications, which has been our practice. So, and, and the recommendations from that group are just that, they're recommendations. So, if you could, right now, raise your hand if, council members, if you would like to be attend, if you would like to do some of those interviews.
A question.
Okay.
So, 44 is a beast, that's, that's a lot. And I'm, and I haven't been involved in an interview process at, to this point yet, but I, you guys could probably tell me if that is unusually high. I, I would assume it is. And it seems like a lot of workload for two people, period, right? And so, whatever the council decides to do, I mean, or whoever decides to jump in, I think we're all ready to serve. But whatever I can do to help just take some of that workload away, I would be more than happy to do.
Well, the way, the way the interviews need to work from our perspective is, at some point, the mayor's going to have to say, I want to bring forward these 15 or 20. We're going to start with a, our process of prioritizing those applications. Again, you're not bound by those in any way. But we're going to have to come up with a number of interviews. We're, we're like allowing 30 minutes per interview. So, if you factor that out, that's probably going to be a two to three, three-day interview process, depending on how many interviews you conduct. So, I think what the mayor's saying is that if there's more than one council member that wants to be involved in those, then she would split those applications up. If there were three of you that wanted to be involved, you would take one-third, one-third, and one-third. The mayor would be there for all of them. But at any time, any member of council can forward names from that list of 44 to the mayor, once you decide on how many, how many we're going to interview. And then she, she will have an idea of, of how many names that they're actually going to be interviewing versus the ones that aren't on the interview list. And then she could use that information going forward.
Just as a reminder, we will be sending the applications out to our internal review committee this evening or early tomorrow morning. And then they will have until April 15th to provide their feedback. We have a rubric they'll be using. And then that will be forwarded on to council. So, to be clear, here's the recommendation, here are, you know, the rest of all the applications to make sure you have the opportunity to review all of them. Then from there, per our process, which you, the council can change, is we are hoping to have all of the recommendations to the mayor by May 3rd, providing some time that she can bring forward a recommendation to the council in May or June, so that we can get this group appointed, provide training, and then start working with them in July at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yes, I forgot to add that Bill de la Cruz, our consultant, has talked a lot about this concept with Brian and the committee. And he has devised, is putting, based on the, the bylaws and all the discussions we've had, that he will put together a rubric, a guide for this committee to use to kind of group these applications.
And then we also have a rubric for the interviews as well. So, it's clear that we have a, a clear process that we're using moving forward.
So, Mayor, we are running short on time. I think you were looking for a race.
Could I have anybody who would like to participate in the interviews? It doesn't mean three nights or two nights or one night, it's just do you want to participate? Raise your hand.
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to participate, but I'm, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm not assuming right now we're interviewing all 44, or is everyone assuming we are interviewing all 44?
I, I think it's, it is not necessary to interview all 44. We do have to be reasonable with our time as well.
Right.
And I would, I would say the same thing. I, I'm happy to help. I, I have a little bit of a concern that unless you have the same people scoring applications and utilizing the rubric, that you, you're, you're, you've got apples and oranges kind of thing.
That's true.
I think there could be a two-step process in that if there is the committee that is looking at those and they score them based on a rubric, that there could be a cutoff at that point. And then the same with the interviews, that, or, or that all of the council members utilize the rubric and score the individual applications and submit them into the, whoever's going to do the interviews. And that the top 25, say, would be interviewed based on the rubrics, but that all of the council would participate or a subgroup of the council. But I'm, I'm happy to help in, in any way. I'm a little cautious about volunteering to do 44 interviews, but.
I had very similar thoughts to Council Linville on this. You know, in, in the past, when I did sit in with the mayor on the interviews for the appointment to council, that Council Linville ultimately was appointed to that position. That was a time when I was, sat in on interviews. And I sat in on all of the interviews that took place. I think that there is something about consistency of having seen the entire group. When I participated in an interviewing panel in my professional work, it's always the same interview panel, looking at each candidate in order to make that, that recommendation. So, I'm kind of, you know, taking a pause and thinking, hmm, how would that work? And I might need to kind of chew on that one a little bit.
Well, may I suggest that we do need to make a decision here. We're all trying to do the best thing. If we could have the people who want, who are interested, raise their hand and we could draw straws. Then we could have that one person be the consistent person.
Yeah, that, that, another alternative would, would just be to say, if the rest of council is comfortable just having, selecting one other member of council to participate with the mayor, that would solve this problem right now and we could move on to the 40 minutes we have to shoehorn into 15.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with even Council President Ockerval and the mayor doing it as has been done previously. That's just a lot of work. That's a lot of interviewing. And so, if you want to spread the wealth of workload, I'm willing to pitch in any way I can.
Yeah. I, I think we could have used a, a little bit more advice from people who do this, because this isn't, this is, we're, we're kind of floundering here.
Actually, this is the same way that we, the, the prior way that's been working for several years was described at the beginning. It, it, everybody got the application.
How well has that been working?
It was working quite well until recently. And so, we're taking extra time with this. And I, I think that it is in the industry shown to be uniformly acceptable to have the same two people on all the interviews.
Yes, I think so too.
We are supposed to be a decision-making body. We are in work session, we do not make decisions during work session.
Okay, so how about this, Mayor? I, I heard Counselor Lehan say she would be perfectly happy to work with you as long as it's not 44. Would the rest of council be fine with, with Mayor Fitzgerald and Counselor Lehan taking, taking one for the team here, so to speak, and bringing back recommendations? I see a nodding of heads, Mayor, so I think we have an interview team.
All right.
I'm with me, I don't want to be pushing the council president out if she would prefer.
I, I heard her saying she's fine with you doing the interviews.
And we will have more opportunities for interviews and I, and all of the people who applied and, and are in, there are just more applications than there are, there are opportunities, which is, is the same, which is a good problem to have. And I will certainly hope that all of those people will, will participate in our, in the many, many activities that will come out of this, because this is not a, a one-shot deal, this has many layers to it. So, I think with that, we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. Everybody cares a lot about this, I really appreciate it. And we do have the Town Center Streetscape Plan and Frog Pond East and South Update. I would like to say that we are going to need more time on this and I don't want to rush too much, but can we all just participate in moving it along? With that, I will introduce our staff member, and Bradford, for the presentation.
We have Philip Bradford.
Philip Bradford, here you are.
Ben Weber and Matthew, Matthew Arnold.
We've got three of you. Philip Bradford, Matthew Arnold, and Ben Weber, welcome, it's all yours.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, City Councilors. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the city. I'll be presenting an update on the Town Center Streetscape Plan along with our consultant team from Sarah Design tonight. Last time this went before City Council was February 1st, where I introduced the project. And along with the three project concepts, agricultural legacy, technological innovation, and the river environment. Since then, we conducted an online forum and posted a survey on Let's Talk Wilsonville, where the winning concept was the river environment, with the second place being technological innovation, and the third place was agricultural legacy. The rationale behind the staff recommendation tonight that was presented to Planning Commission most recently is included in the packet, so I won't go over that due to time. But we are recommending that we move forward with a blended con- with a blended concept between river and the elements of the technological innovation that were well received by the public. At the last Planning Commission work session on March 10th, Planning Commission agreed with our recommendation, but requested more detailed renderings of what the Streetscape Plan would look like. So tonight, we will be presenting that to council for feedback. So just before we move on to the consultant team, I just want to note that what you see tonight is still subject to change after we will conduct a technical advisory committee review of the materials. And the building that's shown in the illustration is purely for rendering purposes and is not representative of anything that would necessarily be built through the Town Center Plan or code. And also, the next time this comes before council will be for reviewing the draft plan. So in addition to the questions that we will be asking at the end of the presentation, please feel free, please feel free to let us know. Anything that you see within the presentation and design that you like or don't like, so we can incorporate that before the draft plan comes before you again in May. With that, I will pass it over to the consultant team with Ben Weber and Matthew Arnold, and they will show you the design.
All right. Thank you very much, Philip. And thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald and council members, for your time tonight. Again, my name is Ben Weber. I'm the project manager and planner with Sarah Architects, leading the consultant work on this project. Philip gave a very thorough background overview of the process that we've been undertaking since about October there. So I will try to be very, very quick, showing a couple of these concepts and get to the discussion point as soon as possible. And as I go through a few slides, just take note of if there's anything you want to jump back to once we get to the discussion topic. But I'll try to be pretty rapid here in the interest of time. So let me get this shared real quick. All right, as this comes up. Do you all see that okay?
Yes.
All right, title slide. We can skip by that. We are seeking action today from you all. First, seeking your support for the recommended concept that we'll have up here on screen. And then, as Philip mentioned, seeking any other input you may have that will help improve this concept and the overall sort of content and, and style of the street design plan for the town center that we'll be working on for the next couple of months. If you've been following along with the project, and I know it was at your February, your early February meeting, and that a few of you have attended the public forums, as well as Planning Commission meetings, where we've gotten into this project more deeply, you've seen the project presented in a format somewhat similar to this. And so this slide represents that blend of elements from the preferred concepts, you know, based on community input. Phil mentioned river and technological there. So this is just a preview of some of those pieces, bringing in elements such as curved wood and metal benches, the abundant use of street trees and stormwater planters. And then with the gathering spaces and motive spaces, a more sort of geometric and patterned arrangement to the sidewalk and, and surface material patterns to help define that space. So that's just a preview of a few pieces that we're putting into the Streetscape. I want to just jump straight ahead and show you a concept rendering of how those pieces, when you think back to the Town Center Plan and its goals, you know, for a walkable and bikeable active environment, that also supports transit, of course, that uses distinct materials and surfaces and landscaping to sort of define and unify the entire town center. It really helps draw people, you know, out of their cars to make this a place for gathering, in addition to being a place just for moving around. It really helps the Streetscape sort of tie into the private development and redevelopment that would happen on parcels and sites throughout the entire town center. So those elements that we've been working on through the, the alternatives the past few months, we sort of unified those and brought this into this recommended concept. I want to just point out a few of those features specifically. You know, that includes the use of concrete banding in the sidewalk and the crosswalk to help define that movement space. Bike racks, of course, for secure lockup, and is really just an attractive furnishing element within the Streetscape. Street seats, which, as we know, in Wilsonville and many other towns, become all the more prevalent this past year as outdoor dining has become a necessity. We want to make sure that the town center, you know, supports that use in the long term, to provide space for restaurants and gathering to spill outside of the building envelope, onto the street. And then the use of that core ten and timber bench, you'll see in the bottom right corner, to really anchor the intersection and put sort of a signature seating area, you know, that's shaded and sort of lushly planted there, to really make that, that portion of the street remarkable and attractive. A few more bits here, again mentioning that curb extension where the benches and landscape zones are. That also helps calm traffic for just a safer walking and biking environment, and, you know, shortens the crossing distance for people going from street to street. We have street and planter trees that you'll see along the entire block length, and particularly in that curb extension zone at the intersection, as well as the stormwater planters, you know, knowing the importance of providing those kind of infrastructure and ecosystem services for stormwater catchment within the street. So that can be an attractive and functional design element. And then finally, in the back corner, the plaza and gathering space that, you know, very well could exist on the private side of the property line, but uses a lot of the same material and design elements as the Streetscape, to help bring uniformity and actually blur the lines a little bit between where people can gather and play and recreate and do business, you know, whether they're in the right of way or they're in a development zone. So with that, sort of quick preview of the concepts, I just want to bring up these two key questions. You know, do you support us moving ahead with the recommended street design concept? And do you have any additional comments or suggestions to offer about that recommendation? As I open this up for discussion, I've just put those two questions at the bottom of the page there, along with this rendering. And at this point, you know, welcome your questions, comments, or if there's any other detail I can provide on, on anything you've seen or the project process to date.
I do have a question. In, I, I understand that you've really been taking in the comments from people about the two, the river, the riverscape, the river look, and the technological. Did you feel like the design lost anything by doing a blend?
No, I don't. And I think the design actually got stronger based on that input. And people really identified what the most important ways of using the Streetscape were to them. You may have heard those comments about the rarer concept being a little bit convoluted in the way that you would walk up or down the sidewalk. And so there's this more linear pattern to the sidewalk paving, you know, helps bring a little bit more order to that. But then people really did appreciate, I think, the curvilinear, sort of organic elements of these benches and the stormwater facilities here as a complement to that. So I, I hope that the, the concept that pulls from all three of those original ideas is, is as strong as possible. But I definitely welcome your thoughts if there are ways we can improve.
I, no, I just wondered, as a designer, what you thought about that. I think it is a very unique, I can see that the technological theme emerging there. And it does look, that the planted areas are, you know, generous enough with plants that they really work. I think when you go to a more sparse kind of landscape, so it just, let's put a rock and a tree in here, it does not invite you to go over there. Anybody else?
I, I think that this, I got a little bit giddy, actually. I don't know if that's the right word, but I got pretty excited when I saw the design concept, because it mean invoked immediately this really great type of architecture that the Pacific Northwest is known for, where it takes the landscape and it takes that modern and it kind of blends them together. And some of, you know, the great pieces of architecture in the Northwest and throughout the entire country, this just kind of reminded me of some of those movements and some of those beautiful different pieces that we see throughout our region. And so I just want to commend you on being creative enough to take two good ideas and merging them, merging them together. I have nothing to add. I think that this is actually very brilliant. Good job.
I just have one concern. I, I, I have no, I have no problems at all with the merging of these two concepts and with the aesthetics of the, of the appearance of the Streetscape and the street design. My only real concern gets down to the work of the Planning Commission. And while I think from the notes in our packet, it indicated that, that the commissioners provided feedback on the draft recommendation and visualization of the recommended design concept. And that, this concept that I am, I, I'm assuming is what was presented to them. But the Planning Commission, it says the commissioners generally supported the recommended concept and requested more detailed renderings to better understand how the design would look in reality. And then it goes on to say, in response to this feedback, the project team will present this, this presentation to the council. So my, my only concern is, I don't feel like that is a very concrete recommendation from the Planning Commission. It sounds like a, a general support of this effort. And my question is, is it appropriate for the council to move forward with it without having something strongly recommended by the Planning Commission?
I can jump in. This is Kim Rabel, senior planner. Just to provide a little more context on that Planning Commission recommendation. So they did not actually see this particular image. They had some higher-level concepts that were consistent with what was prevented, presented at the Streetscape Forum. And so in response to some of their feedback, we actually took the step to try to, to try to visualize this a little more concretely so you could understand the notion behind the concept. And so I think I would characterize the recommendation as supporting the idea of blending the two concepts, but they didn't actually have the benefit of seeing this type of image and how it fits together a little more. So that being said, one of our next steps will be taking this back to the Planning Commission for their review as part of a draft plan.
So then, thank you, Kim, for that, for that clarification. So then, I guess my question is, should the council wait for a final recommendation from the Planning Commission? Or are there timelines that need, that create a constraint that would preclude us from, from doing that?
So I would say to that, the, their, the recommendation was supportive of the concept. This, we actually, I think, got a little bit ahead of ourselves in, in getting to this level of detail here. And so we will have an opportunity when we come back to them at their next, I believe we're going to go back in May right now. And we'll have an opportunity to put this concept, as well as some additional ideas, in front of them so that they can weigh on it before, weigh in on it before it comes back to you to review that draft plan.
Okay. Oh, conversational, yes. So I have three points or concerns. One is, this is, well, to start with, I think this is a beautiful street design concept. I, I think it looks fabulous. One of my concerns would be, how well does it age and how well does it maintain? So you don't want 15 or 20 years from now to have a future city staff or council come along and say, you know, this is just way too much work. Let's just take this part out and make more sidewalk. Because, because it's too much to maintain this level of complexity. And maybe that's true, or maybe that's not true. Maybe this is easier to maintain than this sidewalk. But, so that's one thing, is the, the long term. The, my second concern is, this is a beautiful situation, but where are the cars? I only see five cars here. There aren't enough cars in this picture to take, to transport the number of people in this picture. So, or it'd be marginal, let's just say. And, and so I think you have to look at, and it's all parallel parking, which nobody likes to do. I guess your cars are going to be parallel parking for you in the future, so it won't be an issue. But I think you have to look at places like Bridgeport, like downtown Lake Oswego, even like Willamette, which is angle-in parking on a side street. At, at how are they, where are they putting the cars and how easily, how easy are they making it for people to access? Is this going to be more like a Willamette kind of experience, or more like a, or, or Lake Oswego or Bridgeport, where there is structured parking somewhere? And there's also local parking, parallel parking, whatever. But is parallel parking the, the wave of the future, or is it one of those other things? That's, that's my second concern, is, is I don't think you can do the pedestrian piece without taking into account where the cars are, because this is not telling us that. And it's not your job. I'm not implying that. And I had a third one, which will come to me in just in a minute, but, oh, well, if it comes to me, I'll let you know. But, but there's a third concern here besides. Anyway, that was, those were two of my big concerns about it, even though I, I could easily get excited about it if you told me there's a structured parking thing right behind this, or there's angle-in. Oh, I know the other concern. Do we need to be more flexible about these parking spaces next to the pedestrian ways, having come out of a pandemic, where we're trying to, you know, I, I don't know, this white car that is looking at us with the person in front of it, what's behind him? A, a, a little box, a flower box or something? Is that movable? What if, what if the business needed to expand, as we have done, into our parking areas to allow more, more outdoor retail or outdoor dining or, you know, something like that? I mean, we have, we have learned in this last year or so how to be more flexible with our outdoor space for those kinds of things in a pandemic, where indoor space is constricted. Is that something we need to take into account going forward so that these parking spaces, these, these parallel parking spaces could easily be used, be usurped for pedestrian uses also, if we took care of the cars somewhere else? Is there a way to, I mean, I, I think we need to ask those questions about how we use this space and how it could be more flexible, given what we've just learned in the last year.
Councilor Lehan, Philip Bradford, associate planner. I can take those three questions. And after I'm done answering, if the consultant or Kim, I, any of you have anything to add, please feel free. But for the first question for maintenance and aging, and that's definitely a concern of the project team. So of the project team, so when we do our technical advisory committee meetings, we're very cautious about picking materials that public works or parks or also private landowners would have concerns about for long-term maintenance and cost. So we're trying to make the most timeless design we can and also age well and be easy to maintain by all city departments. So that is definitely something we are making considerations for every step of the process. And as far as the arrangement of vehicle parking, so with the adoption of the Town Center Plan, we also adopted various public street cross-sections with that, and the Streetscape Plan is a refinement of those. And since those have already been adopted, those are showing parallel parking. So the public streets would have parallel parking, and I believe in the Town Center Plan document, there is a parking deck shown. However, that construction of that is, you know, up to future development, but the code would allow for that, and also there'd be the parking requirements that would be generated by the youth. So you'd have a variety of parking spaces, but from your question, I feel like the future Town Center would be resembling more of a downtown Lake Oswego or Bridgeport in terms of the parking situation, rather than the Willamette configuration in West Lynn. And then for the third, what's behind the SUV in the rendering is a parklet, and that is intended to be temporary. So we're trying to integrate tactical urbanism features into the Streetscape Plan. So if a restaurant were to have that for half the year, they could, but it could easily be removed, and then it would become a parking space again. But with the pandemic, it was important for us to consider flexibility in the Streetscape design. How could you carve out more public space when needed out of the plan and make sure it's flexible and can incorporate things that you're seeing, you know, in surrounding communities too, with outdoor dining and small-scale public spaces?
Yeah, I think those are great answers, Philip, and really suitable and really good questions, Counsel Lehan. We'll make sure to describe those in the Written Streets Plan over the next few months. Those are very valid concerns about the longevity and adaptability of the street design.
I just, I know we're short on time, so I'll quickly jump in with my one question or comment, and that is, I think that this looks, you know, it's a really lovely inviting image, and I know that one of the desires from the process with the Town Center would involve or include green spaces and have that kind of environmental touch all throughout. And so I love what is being done in the corners of having some of that green in each of the corners. I did have one question, and that is, in making this space work well for pedestrians and for vehicle traffic, the height of the vegetation in those corners, so that there is still clear visibility, you know, and it's a safe corner for everyone. I think that's probably an important part. I don't know if there's standards as far as like how tall is too tall, and of course, I hope that, you know, all of those thoughts would be in consideration when picking the vegetation that is going in those spaces, so it's not quickly outgrowing and always needing to be trimmed back or, you know, so that there is clear visibility for both the cars and pedestrians when they're trying to navigate those intersections. But I like the green touches. Yeah.
I'll just add one other thing quickly. One of the things that drives me crazy about architectural renderings is they never have signage. They never have sign clutter. They don't have any signalization, not for the pedestrians, not for the cars, nothing. So where are those things? That really junks up a space. If you add all that signalization and the signage that is just going to, you know, that you have to really be strict about keeping the level of signage down. Watch out for, caution this, caution that. But architectural renderings never have any of them. So it, of course, looks prettier without any of that stuff. So just a pet peeve of mine, not being an architect.
Your Honor, I would, just to help move this along, I think they're asking about, do you support us moving ahead with the recommended street design concept? And I would guess, barring any, I mean, including the recommendations that have been included that we, and I don't know that we need a motion, I think we probably just need a consensus about moving forward. And I would like it to be with the caveat that when we review this again, either at the May 3rd or the May 17th council meetings, that we take into consideration the Planning Commission recommendations from their April 14th meeting. And we ask for that to be forwarded to us when we get to the place of making a decision.
Thank you, Counsel Linville. So I think we have City Manager Cosgrove and Matthew, Ben, and Kim and Philip. Have you got enough input to move forward to your next step?
I think we have enough direction to come back with you, to come back to you, yes, after the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much, everyone. We'll now move on to from east to the south with Mr. Pauli.
Brian, we've got to start the meeting close to time.
No.
Why don't you put it during the regular meeting?
That's fine. We can do it. I think the city attorney's worried that we've advertised for 7 o'clock, but I think we can get this one knocked out pretty quickly, so I just recommend you go ahead and get her done, and then we'll continue on. We don't have any public hearings, other than a request for a continuance, so...
You've got the new business, though, where you could put it, on the same topic.
Unless this can be moved to the next section of the meeting.
Well, I'd have to talk, I think I'd have to talk to the staff person to know whether or not that's possible. It's not new business. We're not asking council to vote on anything, so...
It is new business.
Just go for it.
You know what? Yeah, let's just, for the sake of time, we can put it under new business. He's going to do the presentation, apparently, for I demand or new business, so we can just consolidate it with that. That's a good recommendation by the city attorney. I think that's fine.
Thank you. And I am adjourning the work session at this time, and we will reconvene in seven, do we need seven minutes?
Yeah, just 7:24.
We'll see you at 7:24, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Kim, do you have citizens on there? No.
No, there's nobody waiting.